Another chair, yeah. Get you another chair. You're making him wait?
I'll shift by you.
Yeah, there's one there.
Nope. I'll shift by you.
All in order? Jill with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with your call.
Steve Aaron.
Here.
Carol Honka.
Here.
Jay Jones.
Here.
Lexi Murphy.
Here.
Jean Anrau.
Here.
One attendance, thank you. That is a forum. Any guests who are not on the agenda? Have you signed in?
I did not sign in, but do I get my five minutes?
Yep, right after we approve the agenda.
Okay, go forward.
Just wanted to make sure we get you down some of this. All right, item number five is to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to do that, approve the agenda.
Motion by Carol.
All second.
Support by Jean. It's been moved in second to approve the agenda for tonight. Do we have any other further discussion or amendments? Here and now, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Agenda approved. Here and now, to the open opportunity to address the council.
Okay. I have a complaint about the electric bills that are being issued to the people in Palena. You did not change your rates from summer to winter, and therefore, everybody that has been getting a light bill has been charged more money. And on one alone is almost $100 for the whole time. And I want to know what you plan on doing about not charging the proper rate for your residents in Palena, number one. Can I have five minutes for number two?
Sure.
All right, Maple Street, that is a sore, sore subject for Glenda. You are talking about raising the speed limit or doing something with the speed limit on Maple. That's on your agenda. Discussion. When I have company come to my house, I have to stand on my front deck and make sure that there is no traffic coming from the south because of that hill that they were supposed to cut down and did not. And I am thinking, speed limit in that hill or that street is not accurate and should be addressed. When I counted how many driveways come out on Maple Street tonight before I came here, and there are 14 that do not have an alley approach that they can use if they have to. 14 people have to back onto that street, and with it becoming a bypass, the traffic isn't going to change with it being a bypass, number one, because if you sit there and count how many cars and how many semis that start, you live close, 2:00 in the morning, they start and they don't end. And if you count them, it's not going to change because it's a bypass. And I really and truly hope that somehow or other the county and the city address something to slow that traffic down. My five minutes are up.
Okay, well, thank you for both of those points. We are addressing the one, the Maple Street is not to upgrade the speed limit, it's to put signage, upgraded signage, so that people understand. So there's, we're getting some quotes on radar, so it'll shoot and show them that you're supposed to be going 25, not 45.
In order to get down to 25 miles an hour coming from the south, you have to start slowing down two miles south. I have checked that just doing 55 mile an hour, and I cannot get to the city limits under 35 mile an hour, even two miles out.
That's hard when you're, yeah, that's hard.
And think of a semi that's coming and what they, what they throw at you.
Of course, they drive that same road and they know it, too.
Yes, they do.
Doesn't make any difference, though.
No.
So we do have, we are working on that from a public safety point, especially because of the planned detour route that we assume would increase traffic. I know we'll be working with Nate and Kelly to get some signage quotes and see what we can do and what the county can do to help with that.
And also, what are you going to do about the money that was charged to the people in Palena over and above what they should have been charged?
We can run corrections, I believe, from that. I believe MRES is.
Yeah, we could look into that and actually see how far for that period of time.
Because I did bring, I did bring that up at one of the meetings, I remember.
It happened the year before also.
Yeah, it's been done before, but I don't know what they.
They, I thought they left it go, but I don't remember how long, the length of time.
It's not making the city and people in Palena happy, believe me, I've been talking to them. So this council needs to do something about it.
Thank you for your input.
Have you figured out how to change the rate so that you're in the right rate?
Yeah, yeah, it's been changed.
Then I. This last month was, was okay. The bill that I just got was okay, but everything before that.
I want to say, I'd have to double check, but I want to say for the two, past two billings.
Yeah, it should have been about two months that it was changed.
Whatever, whatever council meeting that Lexi brought it up, I believe it was the Tuesday, the Tuesday or the Wednesday of the, after the meeting, we had it, we had adjusted.
I brought it, I think I brought it up between the end of January. Yeah, because I wasn't here for the last two in February and I know it's supposedly done.
I know it was the Tuesday or Wednesday after the, Lexi brought it up, that we had it adjusted for the winter rates.
So we will get a resolution for that to see what MRES wants us to do to correct those billings. Awesome. Anyone else?
It's gone, no.
Thank you. You're welcome. You are welcome to stay or go as you need it. Okay, next up, we have reports from Larry and John on their TCA board duties. I can't see Larry, but Larry's here. Whoever wants to go first, Ken?
I just want to say that with me being on the financial board at TCA, we go over what we spend for money from TCA. We okay the programs that we come in. We have to deal with outside networks, ESPN, all these other ones. Each one is individual, so we have to, we have a person up there that does all our, and then we have to approve purchase of new equipment and things like that, and try to keep it within reason. Right now, they are rewiring Hartley for the new wiring system like we have here in Palena. Sandborne is just about done, I think. Prem Guard, I think Hartley's the last one. And they're going to start on some rural internet, so. And it's just pretty much the same thing you do here, go through the finances and purchases, stuff like that, so.
And how often do you meet?
We meet once a month.
And you've done for quite a while now, four years?
Three years.
Three years, kind of.
Interesting.
We're glad you're doing it.
Yes, thank you, Larry.
Any questions for Larry?
Representative Palena, well.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm on the program committee. I'll just hand these out. They're just a channel list that you can see. The programming committee basically meets when they're needed. That means that when contracts are due, we meet. And there's one representative from each community, so there's four representatives. Matter of fact, his sister is one of them, and Scott's sister is one of the representatives. Ed Robinson, I can't think of the guy from Sandborne, and then me on that. We basically do the legwork for the main committee. In other words, when bids come in for rebroadcast rates and stuff, basically, they're either accepted or not accepted. If their price hike is too much, and there's 99% of the time, it's going to go up and not down, then they want to, then, then it's that committee that decides, ah, we better go and try to get some better prices or something like that. There's a couple of different ways that that's done. There is a, for lack of a better term, a union that, that has a lot of the channels, and then we go to them, and then they actually do the wheel-reeling with the different TV networks and stuff like that. Now, what I mean by TV networks is not really the off-airs like 49, et cetera, but TBS and USA and all those, they kind of, now, they must be getting something done because lately, they've been calling around the, the, that particular board, and they would call DJ and say, you know, we're charging, we're giving the board a $4 customer charge, but we'll give it to you for $3.98, or something like that, just per customer per month on that. Now, a lot of times that works, but what they're trying to do is just weaken that union so they can get better prices and they can get us two years down the road or something. Most contracts are for, as you know, it'll be like, we'll say $5 for the first year, then it'll go up a dollar every year for the next three years or next five years, something like that. So once, if it's too much of a question, we call around and kind of see what people, people want, you know, can you guys get along without Kelo or something like that? And can you guys get along without TBS or something on that order? And then they tell me, so yeah, if there's stations you want to see, call me, and I'll bring it up at another meeting, or I'll call, I'll call DJ right away and say, be looking into that, and then when it comes, I've been trying to get MLB Network for ages, but every time, that usually means a price hike for the basic because these networks don't want to go on the part that you pay for. The part that you pay extra for is the 200 tier and of course, the movie channels, but the 200 tier, the extended cable or extended digital is part that you pay a little extra for. Now, if you get, oh, for instance, if you get one of the setups, for instance, the, where everything is combined into that, if you get one of those, getting that is $4 extra, you know, so it doesn't amount to a whole lot, but it does cost more. But, so we go, oh, MLB, that's, if people like baseball, they'd be willing to pay an extra $4 to get that. And so they look, and then, then we start wheel-reeling with MLB Network, they go, no, we want to be in basic. You got to put us in basic. And so if it's $4 a customer, that means basic's got to go up $4 to cover that. And so then, then it usually gets lowered down because of that. Now, I said we meet when necessary. It might become necessary. As a thing that I pulled up, what happens to Twins game if Valley Sports goes bankrupt? They just filed, they haven't filed bankruptcy yet, but they're on their 30-day liaison or period of time where they're going to decide whether they can go bankrupt, or whether they're going to go bankrupt or not, or if they get some financing. They're about $8 billion in the hole right now. And Valley Sports, if you're wondering what that is, that's where we get our Twins games, our Timberwolves games, our other sports game. Right now, you're not going to get them online at stream because Iowa has blackout streaming, but that might change if, if MLB Network is preparing to take that over. But whatever happens, if nothing happens and just the name changes on the, in the lower right-hand corner, if Valley Sports goes away and MLB comes back on, we probably won't meet. But if there's something where they're going to switch to channels or go to MLB and we have to get MLB in order to get Twins or something like that, that's when our bunch meets and decides on that and goes, and we'll have that information on that. So that's, that, I'm thinking, oh, I just wanted to address off-airs. Off-airs are 49, 11, 13, 14, 27, whatever. They're the off-airs. They've been pretty good. It used to be years ago, you didn't really have to pay a whole lot extra to get off-airs on your desk. Then they went and lobbied the government, and to make a long story short, the government said you have to have ABC, CBS, NBC, all the main networks, you have to run them, and they have to run, get them from a network station in your area. Well, they just, and they're done, eliminated, now, we're lucky because we're, our area is actually Sioux Falls and Sioux City, so if we were getting Sioux Falls, we could grandfather them in and keep them. Now, you'll notice we do get a Sioux Falls station, KSFY, I think it's something like that that's on here, I haven't looked, but it's a Sioux Falls station, and that, the reason is, we're getting it from Sioux City, that network, but they offered us so much less, like $0.25 a customer or something. I said, why not? And we took it. KDLO, that was a different problem. They're owned by a company out in New York, same as Channel 9, and their price went up into the moon. And so they were pretty much had to be dropped. If, if we find a station in Sioux Falls that is cheaper, and the same station in Sioux City goes, no, 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 we're in your territory, we have to be in your territory, that means that they can push it, we can, we can actually go with them and, and save money, go with Sioux Falls, but then it'll come on and they'll, and they can fight it. And I don't know what board or whatever decides that, if it's a government board, probably maybe FCC, I don't know. And if they say, no, you got to go with Sioux City, we have to go with Sioux City and pay them what they want, basically. In other words, if they're saying, no, it's $8 a customer, and we offered you that, but now that we had to go push this and stuff, now it's $10. And we got to be, and so, yeah, when the government gets involved with stuff, you can always depend on that being great and stuff. One thing to thank Larry for is Palena now has a church channel. I wanted to make sure to mention that, Channel 498. Right now, not all the churches are taking advantage of it. I think they will eventually. And so, once again, because I've been talking to them now, they're, and that stuff, especially now that we put it on our channel and we put it on Palena when the weather was bad and we had, and we canceled our Wednesday services, actual Wednesday services, I put it on for the other ones, too. So, and then, so now the pastors are getting ready to, they think they might, this might come in handy. And so, all the other towns have had it, they've had it for, some of them, 10 years, and, and every church in their town has been there. So we're just a little behind, we'll get them and stuff. So I don't, I don't have, I'm just looking through here, I don't think there's anything else that you need to know about that. No, I'm not seeing anything, so. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the eighth one we're done is to consider property and liability insurance coverage update.
Good evening. Do you want me to stand? Pull the trigger?
No, you're right.
I'm good?
Yeah.
Thanks, Larry. The reason I'm here today actually started back in October of 2022. Fire chief Ryan Harper contacted me about the availability to insure the new fire truck for replacement costs instead of actual cash value. So then on November 15, 2022, we met with Chief Harper, council members Honka and Anrau, and I was just making sure the city wanted this option investigated, and I was told to prepare a proposal. So I checked with the company that we represent that insures cities and that I knew offered a designated value coverage for fire trucks. Okay, so that company wanted to wait until the April renewal to quote the Palena business, and now I know why. That company has paused from issuing any new cities. So in Iowa, there are about three options for municipal insurance, and now it sounds like it's going to be down to about two. One of those two companies is EMC Insurance, which is the current carrier of Palena's insurance. ISP Insurance Agency, who I'm an agent for, does represent EMC. We have other cities, I don't have them myself, but the agency does. So I know that there is an option that would provide replacement cost option on fire trucks that are newer than 20 years old. So if they're 20 years old or newer, they can have that replacement cost with your current carrier. So on February 22nd, I asked clerk Wise to contact your current agent to verify this option. I don't know if the clerk got an answer back or not on that. I'm not here today to cause a conflict or make any accusations, I'm here to fulfill the request that was made of me. So if the city wants an alternative to their current agent, EMC, the insurance company allows what's known as an agent of record change. That would appoint myself as a representative of ISP Insurance to become your agent. The premiums would be the same with either agent. However, I would require if you change that I meet with the clerk and review the policy for accuracy and for coverage as desired by the council to make sure we have the things the way the council wants.
Like the city clerk or?
City clerk.
Okay.
Or whoever, even if it's an insurance committee, if that's a better group to meet with, probably would want the outside guys to kind of look through vehicles. The fire department has done that already. Ryan's provided that to me, so just to go through it to make sure it's really the way, certain vehicles and everything. That is the insurance responsibility, but when you change, I just don't want to assume whatever was on there is correct.
Right, and would you do it with them, too?
Whoever ruled, I'd start with, normally I would start with the city clerk and start that way, but I would prefer that we get multiple people involved. Pause of the breakdown of, get the outside guys to say, do we really have these vehicles and so forth. Same thing with the ambulance, we can put that replacement cost coverage on the ambulance because it's new enough as well. So we really have six vehicles between the fire department of what, of what Ryan's provided me, we have five fire vehicles and the ambulance that are in that 20 years or newer that could qualify for that replacement cost coverage. What that's giving you is, instead of the truck being burned up or in a wreck and paying, okay, the chassis is worth this and depreciated fire apparatus is down to this, we have to buy, not a branded, but we have to buy a vehicle, a fire truck that's suitable to take that place. We don't just say, well, that truck is only worth its 40-year or whatever at that time. Okay? So it's giving you that higher value of payment at the time of loss. Okay? But since all of this kind of has backed up on that company telling us right at the last minute, they're no longer, they're pausing issuing new cities, all this has kind of come to a deadline. And so if the council wants to make that change, we have to make that tonight if you want it for the April 23 to April 24 policy period, policy remains April 1. So the current company, if you want to change, has to know now so that they can change their stuff with the company to appoint the new agent to be your agent.
So we don't even have a week or anything?
We have 11 days before the renewal is the legal term, so March 19.
Is our.
Is our date.
Definitely.
Is our date to sign that agent of record. I would prefer that we don't wait till that last date, but I assume we're not, unless you're in a special meeting, you're probably not meeting again to act on that topic.
Our next meeting would be the 20th.
Right, and so that's outside of that timeline.
Yep. Oh, we like special meetings.
So that's what I, that's why I'm here. I'm just fulfilling what I was asked to do. I apologize that the deadline came on us, but we were working with other opportunity and they pulled right on the end and so we're not doing it. They're renewing cities but not issuing any new cities.
And until you find out for sure where we're at, what we all have for vehicles and stuff, and that has to be one package, right?
Correct.
You would have all the vehicles?
We'd have.
For the city guys, the ambulance, the fire trucks, everything?
We'd have all the city insurance, buildings, liability, work comp.
Everything.
Everything needs to stay with one carrier.
Other than, other than medical?
Other than your benefits by agent's use.
Right, okay.
All of the property, the liability, the vehicles.
Everything.
Your umbrella, your account.
Everything would go with one company.
Your lease, liability, all that would need to be with one agent. Company won't split it. It needs to be with one company, and the company won't split agencies, it's okay. ISP can do the property, and someone else can do the vehicles, and somebody won't do that. So the entire package is moved to a different agent if that's what you guys decide.
And until you know everything, you can't give us a quote either, right?
Yeah, I don't know that you, I don't know that anybody knows what your 23 premium is yet. I don't think that is.
Oh, okay.
I don't know that the current agent even has that put together.
Oh, okay, okay.
Normally, it comes about the 15th, 20th of the month, right before they renew. So probably, maybe your next meeting or your first meeting in April is when you know.
What it is.
What that. Point is, a premium will be the same for the same coverage with either agent.
Yes, gotcha.
The difference would be is, if we discover, as Ryan's pointed out, there's some vehicles that are no longer owned by the city, that should be removed, and that's really the insurer's responsibility, it's not the agent's responsibility, because we don't know when you trade vehicles and all that stuff. So that's why I want to go through it with, and Ryan's done that for me from the fire departments.
So you know where you're at there.
I know where that's at. I would like to meet with the outsider, if Scott or the outside insurer.
Scott or Kelly or something.
So, right.
No.
That doesn't have to be done, I mean, that, the main thing is, if, if you want to do an agent change, that's what has to be done. The rest of it will get in this next, we can sort it together, we just have to notify the board of mutual of that decision.
Okay. Sounds good.
These are the special meetings.
By the way.
To take in.
Yep.
Yeah.
That'd be the easiest.
So what date? You said not the very latest, of March 19, but what do you have a?
Today is 6th of the 13th, the, early in that next week.
Right, so week from today would be the 13th. Yep.
Early in that week we should, if that's what the city desires. Again, I'm not, I'm just doing what this approach team do. If the city feels that it's too big of a rush, it's certainly going to be delayed for a year, or if the city feels like they just need to meet, your current agent is meeting their needs, then you can sit out with that agent and go through and tell them, you know it's available, the replacement cost option's available. But I would be more than happy to represent it, I'd be more than happy to be the agent.
Is the council leaning toward a special meeting? I think that's what we need right now.
I think we need to.
But can we come ask you questions anytime? If we have questions. Thank you for that.
You guys.
Thank you. All right, thank you all.
All right, next item is approval of minutes from the 2/21 council meeting. 2/21, anyone still standing? That needs to be revised.
I wasn't at the meeting, but there's a adjournment on finding minutes. That I didn't know about yet.
I thought we had it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought there was something missing.
There was more, I wondered how we got that.
I just thought, well, maybe never adjourned.
There's going to be, they're waiting. They're waiting.
They waited, yep.
So.
So I just, it is there.
Would you like to look at this one?
Oh, you got more, you got more on it even.
Yeah.
Cause there was.
He just runs a copy, just everybody.
Unless, there's something missing.
Yeah, please add a couple paragraphs. Why don't you give us a copy of that? We'll throw it with this. That will look nice.
Good point. I was like, what is that?
No, because I thought, well.
Yeah, I looked at my agenda.
Oh, he's. Well, I just went here and I thought. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, guys.
Bye, Paul.
Okay, we'll just wait a minute so we can get those and might guess right down over.
See, I'll get that new.
I pay you, you get that bigger than I do.
Oh, I got more too, thank you.
You're done.
Yep.
The rest of the story is page two. Six o'clock. Any questions now that you have the rest of the minutes on either page?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 21st, 2023.
Okay, motion to Jean, so three minutes as stated, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we motion Jean a second by Steve to approve the minutes from this 2/21, 2023 meeting. Do we have any other discussion or questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the 2/21, 2023 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Approved, say nay. Opposed, say nay. All in favor, then, all ayes. I heard that means motion carries, all right. Minutes approved. Thank you. And I would say a payment of claims, we have the three minutes and the last little bit there is inside the type of. Should have done that as well.
I have a question on the auditing for the Williamson company. Did we get the blind items, what they were charging you or anything?
No.
Cause I thought the 14,000 is quite a bit.
Yeah, there's, there's votes to get back with us.
The contract was only 7,200, and I know we said it was going to be more because there was a lot of things that he had to come and do here, but doubling it, I think is a lot. I don't know that he will come down.
Oh, okay.
But. Well, I want to see what he all did. I want to see an itemized statement. Yep, and he had an extra guy.
Yep.
But I mean, doubling it, I think that's a lot.
And this will just for like the extra one, correct?
Well, our contract was 7,200. I looked it up. And this last one right here, now we're paying 96, 95, and then the one in February, we paid 44, 25. So 14,000 and $120 is a lot of money.
And have we gotten anything back? No?
No.
No.
And he said they might be stopping back again, so I don't know, you know, he's got some on his. Have to see what we were, what we've been built for. I'm not saying it wasn't all upfront, but.
It does say according to their last contract, it says if significant additional time is necessary, we will discuss it with you and arrive at a new fee estimate before we improve the additional costs.
I remember you said something about 200, but yes.
More, but.
I thought this was a bit long.
Yes, I thought they would have been here by now. We heard talk that they were coming, but we have lots in the room again.
Well, Peter Scott, you want to get ahold of him?
Yeah, I can go and call.
I understand that we would like at least an itemized statement too. We would appreciate.
Anything else on the claims list or the annual claims? Those have just not been ever applied back to the, although they were. In some cases older, they now got their amounts back, their deposit applied, so that we now cleared up. And so we owe those three extras. All those are those. Any other questions?
I'm making a motion to approve it, please.
Lexi, it's been a motion to approve payment of claims.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve payment of claims, as presented for you, before you tonight. Do we have any other further discussion? verification needed or anything? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving payment of claims, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, claims to be paid. All right, the next one is the annual proposal from the mosquito control of Iowa, which is we've had four, I believe, like seven years if you don't remember, or longer than that. It's kind of hard to see, but they're highlighted. Now, up there at the bottom says they're going to keep their prices the same as last year, which that amount was.
Was that the 4,000?
Yeah.
375?
No, that's what it sounds like.
5,000?
Yeah, the 5,000, 5030 is what they sprayed, they cost us last year. And so before that, it was for five years of estate of 4375.
Oh, fair, okay. Do we pay that or do we wait till, you see how many times they spray and then we pay them? Do we pay them the 5,000 and they come and spray it, or do they send us a bill at the end of the season and that's how we do it?
I guess I would assume the contract would be.
I think so too. So I don't know how it's done though.
Yeah, all they say is that they maintain weather logs throughout the summer. So, I mean, we'll have to look back on last year's.
Our history. I don't think they report to us how many times. I don't think it's counted back.
And they really do the soil probing and mosquito population monitoring?
I thought that was kind of cool.
It was, I did, I thought it was cool too.
That's how they spray.
I just figured they came and sprayed. I didn't think they did all this rigmarole. And I do think it's good they watch when the rains and stuff like that, because that's what brings them.
That seems to work.
I will make the motion that we approve for the mosquito control of Iowa.
I shall second that.
Seconded by Carol to approve renewal essentially with mosquito control of Iowa for this summer season. Any other questions about their services, these, anything else? Now, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the annual proposal for mosquito control of Iowa, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Number 12, consider donation for Design St. John's Springling fundraiser. Last year, we gave 50. That's all allotted. Just, yeah, we gave a monetary donation instead of donating an item for a separate option. Does any of you want to do that as well? City's standpoint, it's probably just a question.
I'll make a motion to.
Well. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Good, okay. Were you going to say something first off?
I'm just going to say, you know, if we give $100 to South of Brian, why don't we give 50 or 100 to.
Well, because I think there's a lot bigger deal on the after prom.
Same thing, Steve.
I was, I was going to add that same question.
I thought of it too, but I thought you're looking at a huge thing with the after prom. I think it's a little bigger than the Zion one. That's where I'm at, the difference.
Yep, I was just asking.
No, I agree. I'm not. Cause then I think then the after prom can go up too.
Everything obvious. Everything's going on.
I know, it does, but.
So go ahead and make your motion.
I'll make a motion to leave it as it is, but to give them the $50 donation.
Okay, Carol's made a motion for a second year of $50 donation to Design St. John's School Springling fundraiser. Does anyone want to support that?
I'll second that.
To Steve for a second. Any other further discussion regarding a $50 donation to Design Schools fundraiser? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. We've got that money by March 10. Thank you. We appreciate it. And next up is the note, consider donation to the South of Brian After Prom Party. You have that letter in there as well. Do have time for that. You wouldn't have to approve that tonight, but we just put them together since they were a small request. This one has until May 1st.
I'll make a motion to give the South of Brian's school $100 for the prom.
And a second by Lexi to approve a donation of $100 to the South of Brian After Prom Party. Any other questions or discussion? Now, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving a $100 donation to the South of Brian After Prom Party, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. And number 14, approve a request for planting five evergreens at Swanson, which is, he's asking for up to $2,000. We have this comments in there from what it was. He's expecting a free quote if we got, if it's a town, exact, so that was why it was. I mean, is it really necessary up to the 2,000?
What? Is it really like, I don't want to sound rude, but is it really necessary? Like the trees, like are they the ones that are?
Where are they getting them from? I think this is expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how big they are, if that's the reason they're so high.
Last time, I had a problem with, we were paying like 250 bucks on a plant or something like that. Cause we have attachment on our skid loader that can drill holes and stuff.
Well, they go through AMCS, it's a lot cheaper. I mean, it used to be. I don't know if it still is, and I don't know if they still do trees.
Are these the trees that are like, probably fronds?
Evergreens.
The evergreens.
Evergreens.
I mean, I don't know. I just thought it sounded expensive. I'm not saying we shouldn't replan, but.
No, I know what you're saying.
The school did, they're split, so you're, you're looking at half of that.
Right. Well, either that or ask them how big they are, where we're getting them from. I mean.
Where are they going?
By the Swanson thing.
I know where, which ones are coming out, which ones are.
Must be one set of die probably.
Or he doesn't have a goal here or anything.
Just the 325.
Just the 325 on the sheet.
That's what we got quoted. And he's obviously trying to transition out of that, but he did give you your budget approval, which we had approved earlier in an ad, evergreens.
Was that on there then already?
Didn't have an amount, but it had. So that's it, just said goals for spring replace evergreens, but it didn't have.
Oh, he just had it on there listed. I remember seeing it.
Cause last year we did that top dressing parking thing with the concrete blocks so they could push in with the scoop and load it up. And they removed some of the evergreens, it sounds like in the fall of '21. Yeah, been doing some kind of a project every year, I feel like, some list if you want, that's around what I think.
But he didn't have this amount budgeted, budgeted in?
No, it seems like they usually, he asked the same amount for sort of operational and then remembered he asked extra for that top dressing project too. And we gave him some locks, if I remember right, from the city, and we kind of split those costs, so. He must always, it's been traditionally the yes extra for that, I guess. There were, it doesn't say any other evergreens in the past, but transplant evergreens, so lifting it around baseball field in the fall of '18.
But he didn't have an amount on that?
No.
So we're looking at right.
So this will be additional to that.
To the 70.
Yeah.
They have a great ton.
But we're doing five trees at 325 dollars each. I think it's high. I don't, I haven't been planting anything, so I can't tell you. I think maybe you want to check with him where or what we're getting.
Yeah, how big are these trees?
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing. They must be pretty good size.
Where are they going?
Well, it's what they're going around there. I don't care where they go. He knows where he's going. He's going to fill them in.
Do we need that? Is it something that we absolutely need?
That I can't tell you. I figured he should know that, but.
Well, I can ask him where he's going to quote from, where he's putting them and, or intends to put them, and how big, what trees are for.
Sounds good.
That sound good for our.
So could we just table that until next meeting?
Yeah, he was asking to get, he said they're, whoever it was was probably getting booked up and, you know, to get it handled sooner than later, but for March 20th, I think it's still probably fine. Or if we have a special.
Well, and he's not going to flatten them if it's snowing either.
Yeah.
And they, whoever he's getting from probably wants a commitment.
Yeah, sure, to get on their schedules.
Yeah. So I'd make a motion to table that till the March 20th meeting.
Steve made a motion to table it, and Lexi seconded. Table it until we get additional information. Any other further questions or clarifications? Always all in favor of tabling the request to approve planting five evergreens at Swanson, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Item tabled, thank you. All right, item 15 is related to that, the Swanson, and we heard about this from Heath Pryor, that he was, he was hoping to have the two gentlemen split that. They are both baseball coaches and have worked with them since in the last year at least, maybe more than that, I think. And we are getting half applications for both of them, from both of them with that commitment. They both have done that. So this is just the approval of doing that if you agree with that said motion.
And we know already what we're paying them, or does he have that on there already too or?
It's that same amount you pay him, so the same, they'll split it though instead.
Right, between the two guys.
Yeah, it's the same. So we each get 3,500.
For the summer.
So no difference in our budget, approved already. Just that there will be two people in shot for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve DJ Boy and Taylor Stevens to split the maintenance and at the Swanson complex. I'll second that.
We have the motion, or Lexi, a second by Jean, to approve the hiring of the two gentlemen. We have the motion. Or Lexi, a second by Jean, to approve the hiring of the two gentlemen to share the Swanson maintenance role. So we'll have any other discussions regarding that. Otherwise, we will call for a vote. All in favor of hiring DJ Lodi and TJ Taylor Stephens to share the Swanson maintenance role, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Okay, our first reading of the ordinance amending Article one point oh five municipal electric utility rates. And that is in your packet. Tisha. This is a follow-up to the rate study that they did for July. And let's see, this was in the rate study, this exact chart is essentially what she has typed back under, in her rate study book. So it's all spelled out there for you that there's a lot of, there's a couple different changes. The overall result is a percentage change of five percent, but it's all in little bits here and there. It's not each one gets five percent. So it's spelled out there to show you the specifics. And the cost adjustment will go down. We'll have to cut a page from scrap, grab that in there. Your chart is in, watch, just on that page. Then you can see the old ones from the ordinance book. From the last time there was a rate study done, I think it was twenty seventeen, and then we lowered rates. So it's been five plus years now. With the lower rates and now we're going back to what the twenty seventeen rates were. We can find that out. It's that historical information that...
Well, at the bottom of that one sheet, we got, the ordinance was adopted in two thousand and six. I don't know what that was, if that was the twelve dollar thing?
Cost adjustment subsection. So I think maybe that was in there before. So best explanation is that in page four point three, there was that, that shows what it currently is.
What it's gonna run for average.
And all that, five dollars a month for the year. Four forty in the summer months and five dollars twenty cents, and that's using an eight hundred kilowatt customer.
Yep.
Which just would say determine what's our average, and same for the commercial then, goes up about four percent. Larger, uh, larger customer, commercial customer is seeing an increase of two point eight percent.
And this was that gal that came and was talking about doing this one.
And this was their recommendation.
And that goes into the tax levy?
No, that isn't... Tax levy. This graph, looks like the, yeah, on graph, there you go.
And what would this start?
Well, it's three regions to go through, so, but after that, but they're looking at, okay.
But you can, you can do the second and wait the third.
You're right. I'm working on that, it's a rate increase, or a rate change situation. Even on rate changes?
Well, I suppose if nobody comes up with a first...
Comes the first two.
And you gotta be good.
And then you don't, obviously all that and extra stuff. Well, it doesn't really, it would be a good practice to have three readings. Um, I brought my electric rates, the book, the study that they brought. So you have a third, go to page four dash one. And look at that rate design. What is that? Based on the analysis outlined in this report, MRES is proposing two options for Polina. To increase the rates by five percent. And then option B would increase rates in July and issue one million dollar bonds.
Do you remember that was to make up for the cash reserves? If you go back to like four or five, it talks about the cash reserves. You can see ours and our proposed, so it's just they're making sure we stay there at that minimum. So they recommended that we incrementally increase this and do the increase and then add the bond after that to build back our cash reserves. It's on page four six, explains that.
It's saying we need to do...
They want you to... Well, they like you to have nine hundred and fifty thousand in there, so.
I thought we got a couple million in that.
We do, but we've got that big switch right up.
Yeah.
So that's gonna take what?
Is that, is that what they're talking about so long?
Yes, they know that's coming, or they know we're doing it, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's nine fifty projection, which is eighty-nine percent of twenty twenty-six projected operating revenue is looking ahead. If the capital expenditures were funded through the reserves, then it would go too low. So yes, we can pay for that right now, flat out rate, but I mean, we'll want to build it back up. So that's what they're saying. They're looking at that for us and saying, if they're gonna do that project, we should probably get who's...
We need to start putting in some reserves.
To like nine hundred instead of the nine fifty they recommend if we paid it outright. And it's all part of a mathematical formula they give us on four six here. How, what our amount should be. The recommended funds. So yes, this is just to do the first part of that, it has nothing to do with the step. That's a much bigger step that we can take once you do this.
Well, we know there's gonna be more things coming up with our electrical. We know we want poles done. We know we've got a lot of other things we're looking at for the electrical to be done.
Yeah, you can see that.
Updated.
Steve on that four A, isn't it there in the back? A little bit further back, blue headlines, right before monthly bills tab, that shows you the, what happens to the reserves. Less the capital expenditures and out rates.
This, this one?
No, this, next page. Two pages.
Okay, and then it's showing the years, yep.
We're casting that out for us to show what the...
Well, we have the switchgear.
Right, so that was what... One three. One three. And that will be split over two years, two, one, one point three, one point three from the switchgear project.
Yep, is that, I thought it was one point, so.
Yep. So everyone believes in the MRES rate study suggestion, a recommendation. Need someone to read that.
Okay, I'll party, we really have to read it.
Uh, I won't make you read the rate chart, how about that?
You know, we always used to just do...
Yeah, we used to just do it. We never read it.
Introduced it. We didn't read the whole thing.
You got a good voice.
Okay. I will introduce. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Polina, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to franchises. Municipal, municipal electric utility rates being enacted by the city councils of city of Polina, Iowa. You want to go farther?
Just to state that there's the section one, and there's a ten point three, to set that for...
There's section one.
Five rates.
Maybe you say that one again.
Section two, coverability clause, section three. And it should be passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Polina, Iowa.
Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jean has introduced the ordinance. Amending the code of ordinances to amend provisions pertaining to franchises, so that we can adjust the rates on one point oh five in section one. Do you have a second?
I'll make a second.
Carol, a second. Any other questions, Lexi, Jay, or Lexi? A little bit to the amounts, the specifics from Tisha, and the wording.
And she's seen it all, and everything's good to go? Okay.
So this is obviously your first reading. So you will see this again the next week. Okay, we have no other discussion, then we will call for a roll call vote.
Steve Herron.
Aye.
Carol Hunkam.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
And Jean Naurro.
Aye.
Eyes. First reading of the ordinance to amend Article one point five municipal electric utility rates was complete. All right, and the next one is, is the item seventeen, first reading ordinance amending the chap your father trees. This is relating to just the planting of trees in the parking. It's not to prevent planting of trees everywhere. Obviously with the dashboard, Emerald Ash Board problem, and the fact that Thursday afternoon, some trees still need to come down. In our town, that are, are our responsibility, let alone all the ones residents have. And that was from DNR, had that whole book in that, you remember that?
So do we just have a list of the city, or do we have a list of ones that are not?
DNR did them all, and put them out there, all the categories.
Okay, so I think we need to send, like, we need to talk like about going on other people's properties. I'm assuming like, you know, send them a letter, letting them know.
Well, I thought we did talk about it though, didn't we say when they're bad, they know they have to, if they're...
Well, they have to be. They, they deal with them, but I think as a city, we need to...
Who's gonna enforce it?
And we need to get, that's what I, that's what I meant, like, we need to have, Polly, like, I don't know if we want to have a special committee, or that goes on to the parks and...
Who's the city forester?
I think, I think in the...
Because I think there's so many people that are gonna be like, oh, we're just gonna leave them, and then that's gonna hurt...
The rest of them.
The re, the rest of them, so we need to somehow enforce it.
Well, maybe that should come out in a memo when we do our monthly thing.
Well, and then some of those trees, they can get them vaccinated too. So I mean, you're gonna have to be careful. If you, if you ask residents to cut every tree down, there may have been some residents that have spent hundreds of dollars on getting those trees vaccinated.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying that they need to show, I don't know if they need to show...
Well, I think, I think we need to, like she says, talk to them about it. If they want to spray them, yeah, but if they're dying, they need to take them out.
Right, let's go.
I think that was all addressed in that...
You drive around town.
I think that was all addressed in that evaluation. When the DNR came around, so we, if you can find that, look at, look at that and see what that, what they evaluated. But I think that was all addressed in there, yes.
Would that be a nuisance committee then?
Well, ultimately, there's an ordinance, ultimately, there's ordinance for dead and diseased trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would fall, fall under the ordinance.
So would we have to go around and tag them then?
I would say we would have to get them.
Send a letter to the person?
I think we need to, our first one was probably, yes, send a letter and get that.
That would be the nuisance, but I think we need to find that evaluation first.
Right.
That study and, and review that.
Right, I have the, I saw the list in here that Kelly says that of all the cities that we have to do that.
I thought those were all of them, not just the cities. I thought it was everybody. I mean, every tree that he knew. It was a hundred and sixty some, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, then that, the city only had like a hundred, ten, a hundred and eleven.
I still have his paper that this is all the ones on there.
I've got it too.
So I just think that's...
That's the cities, right?
Right.
I think that was just, I thought that was everybody, but I can't, not here, you don't think so?
No, I think, these are, these are the ones that the cities have to take care of.
Those are the cities they have to take care of.
The cities that are all city property, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, because where I live, I can see two of them that are dead on property.
I just need that DNR report back up and...
Yeah, right.
Find that report.
Prioritizing that.
Sorry, I mean...
And we gotta, and we need to set out guidelines on taking down these trees that they have to be destroyed. By, by, I think, DNR standards.
Yeah, that's in that report also, okay, yeah.
So people are...
Cut firewood.
Cut firewood. You can, you can cut it for firewood.
You can, but you cannot relocate it.
Well, even your yard.
I think that's true, yes.
It's kind of funny the way it was written.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all in that report.
Yeah.
So we just need to get that report and review it again.
And then we have concentrated communication to residents' family.
But we still want to work on this.
This is to prevent the further future problems that become...
Planting of trees and the...
Current tree list, as you see there, does it have the elm trees? Yeah, there's in number three of the old version, it has the... Potwood, potler box elder, Chinese elm or evergreen are not allowed already, or any fruit bearing tree.
Right.
We have quite a list growing, and we could obviously add them ash, but then who knows what our next maple is. I remember looking at the report, and maple is a large percentage of our trees in, in the city, according to the annual report.
So you, you can't plant elm trees in the town either?
Well, that would be, if you were gonna, Chinese elm, you're gonna, but now we're having, I'm sorry, ash, I say elm, and now ash. Because what now is the problem, so we went, what?
What?
I know that, but I'm saying, unless trees you can't plant.
Oh, it's Chinese elm.
Just because it's Chinese.
Oh, that's very circle, right. So this is just, would be, like I said, only in between the outer line of the sidewalk and the curb in the parking.
Do we have to, do we have to regulate ten, because there's some places that there's no sidewalk, so we have to regulate.
That too, didn't it? It's got so far from the curb and whatever.
Because there's a tree right next to my house that's, I think it was hard to, but there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, it says that in the definition.
It's dead.
That always, what the? Yeah, ten feet of there is...
Ten feet from the court.
I don't know, I think that's in a different spot though. But when the Vennett curb line is not established...
For unpaved streets.
Shall we plant in the line that has to plant? This isn't the page of the document. Parking is covered in the clean lot line, or on the unpaved streets, part of the street line, clean lot line, that portion usually traveled by, you keep the large traffic. So it doesn't really say, not covered by sidewalk.
Like seven, two oh three, you can't plant a tree in the street, you know that?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Pretty are.
Yeah.
Boy, that'd be a...
Oh, that'd be a common one, wouldn't it?
Oh, we got weeds growing on the, the streets, might as well plant trees in there.
So that... There's our tree trimming part. This does not happen in busy streets, that's a different page. I did not copy it for this, but... We've got the other...
We just don't want them to plant in the parking areas.
Yeah, for utility purposes.
Right. Well, unless there's a disease, guess what? City has... There's another disease again.
So does that mean if we have a wonky tree that turns into a shrub, the guy's gonna take, fix it, replant it for me?
He'll replant it, no way.
No replanting.
No, no.
He'll pull it out of the ground for you, you can dig a hole if you want.
But it's in the parking.
Then it gets removed.
They won't, it'll be removed.
Once it dies, it's all right?
The previous homeowner planted it.
Yeah, as long as it's alive. Yeah, as long as it's alive, it's all right.
But it's alive, you're okay. But it's just if you would now say, if we pass this, then if you take it out, then you don't have to put something else in there.
Okay.
That's where you're at.
Plain grass.
Yes, just plain old grass.
I have no shade.
So that's what we want to stop.
Okay.
But no, you don't have to take anything down. That's okay.
There is hoping you take it out for me.
And also it would prevent trees from getting planted under, under power lines.
Yes, and that would be another plus, right.
Simplifies the trimming requirements required.
Yes, they're all trimming.
Well, we're trying to, we're going to try to put all the electric underground, so that's where the running.
Someday.
So when somebody plants something, do they have to, like, don't they usually need to come and get it?
Call them on a call.
Yeah, okay.
Not otherwise it on desk permission from the city?
No, I mean, like, don't they have to call like? Well, we used to give a kind of a fee.
It was twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, there was like so much.
Planting a new tree.
They say.
Yes, to plant them.
Five dollars or whatever it was.
Still do that, but now it will just be where it won't cause us future problems.
On the regular property.
Right, they're right. So that we don't have to also pay to take it down later.
Right, you don't have to, five years down the road, take it all out again.
So if that makes sense, the legal version is. There's some pictures out, ordinance amending the code of ordinances. Amending provisions pertaining to trees, planting restrictions.
And I just, no trees shall be planted in any street or parking.
Anyone wants to introduce that ordinance?
Aye.
I want to introduce it.
Yeah, there, yeah.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Polina, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to trees, planting restrictions, be it enacted by the city council of the city of Polina, Iowa. Section one, article six, chapter five, article seven, section seven point oh three, planting restrictions is hereby amended as follows. Planting restrictions, no tree shall be planted in any street or parking. Has that been enough? Okay.
Introduced it and Lexi seconded it. First reading of the ordinance, amending chapter five, trees, article seven, general provisions, seven point oh three, planting restrictions. To prevent planting of trees in any street or parking. We will call, if there is no other discussion or questions at this time. We'll call for a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hunkam.
Yes. Whatever.
Jay Jones. Lexi Murphy.
Yeah.
Jean Nara.
Yes.
Okay, all eyes recorded. First reading is approved. Okay, item eighteen is.
Lexi, two seconds.
Carol was first, Lexi's second.
Okay.
And this is pertaining to what Rich is here to talk about today. We request permission to remove the optional fluoride injection supplement from city water. Yeah, there's some information that he has.
When we had our water report, inspection down hospital. He was kind of shocked we were still doing fluoride. Cause a lot of cities aren't getting away from it since everything we had was already. Two things happened with it. And we have a few things going on with the injectors and whatnot. So we thought to just mix the fluoride and save all the issues. But to do that, we have to notify the citizens of Polina who use the water and the Iowa Department of Public Health. Because they're the ones that monitor as well as the, our fluoride use. And let them know that if we choose to do this, that we're doing this. And when both parties have been notified, ninety days from then, we can just continue.
What are the four areas?
It's two health. It was put in and. When was that, Steve? About forty years ago, you said? When that dentist with the mayor, and he thought he would.
Oh, forty years ago?
Yes, so when we were just little types. He introduced it. And back then, there wasn't a lot of fluoride intake, you know, every kid was getting fluoride treated. Yeah, they added it and, you know, because at that time, a lot of people based didn't have it on other things, so it was a way to get it. We already have fluoride in our water at about a point four to six, depending on the day and what comes in. So by adding it, we're adding another point two to three to it.
But they feel we're fine.
Yeah, we do. You do not need it. There are, I don't remember what you said, like, I lack of these numbers, because I don't remember. There's a lot of them. He said that we're opting out of it, because it's not, the DNR doesn't care if you do it, it's not required. But since we do have it, we are required to do the steps to remove it. So. This is just the request and permission from the council to do it, to move on with notifications and whatnot to do. And then when we do decide to do the new water plant down the road, this will be one more thing we don't have to put in. To be quoted in and whatnot.
It gets, it gets injected into the water. They have injector equipment that treats the water with chlorine contamination. Also, on the same principle, it injects fluoride into the water also.
And he did say that the fluoride was, did things to the system. I don't know, a negative effect on the system. I did not elaborate what that was, but.
So that would be just one, one last thing that we might have to maintain.
Nope, one less cost.
I'll make the motion that we remove the optional fluoride injections on couple of messy water.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Lexi and a second by Jean. To allow the removal of the optional fluoride injection supplement from the city water, which actually just means begin the process of communicating
Yes.
such decision. For ninety days. Do we have any other questions for Rich or any other questions?
Yeah, that's something we can just put in the newsletter. How does that notification?
Yeah, we would notify through the newsletter and then to the Iowa Department of Public Health and the American Dental Association, whatever that is. And then when the last one is notified, the ninety days starts.
Okay.
So at that point, we could probably have a meeting or whatever, say, you know, where they've been notified. So August first would fulfill that ninety days where we stop treatment. As an example.
Right.
Sounds good.
Understand what we're asking. So we've got a motion and a second to remove, begin the process of removing that fluoride from the city water. All in favor of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. Number nineteen is a continuation of what Kelly had introduced and talked about last meeting. And he had the papers here, I think, that may be, well, some of you didn't get to see them, people weren't here, but it's the hitches and toolbox. And he had a plan where he can do it for five thousand dollars for both trucks that includes the new hitches. They need to hook up to everything. And he's looking for, again, the tool drawer system, which ends up being more economical than the tool box. So that's all that voted and just needed to have official blessings so we can get those ordered.
How long would that take to get?
About five days.
Oh, not bad.
Not bad at all.
The hitches, I think Kayden found some with a beaver shoulder or something, that tree, the hitches, if he hasn't stopped. Those could take.
And you guys have the lights already for the vehicles?
Lights are installed. And they're bright.
Carol, do you want to see it if you were on?
Yeah, I'll drive it later. We do, we need it. Yeah, I think it would be handy for you guys to have all your tools together and for your pickup and.
And I think it's nice too, we don't lose any, we lose some height, but we don't lose any bed space. If we need a hole.
Okay, good.
Plywood or anything, it's there, shoals on top.
Nope, sounds good.
I will make the motion to approve for the hitches and toolbox.
I'll second. All right, motion by Lexi and a second by Carol to approve up to five thousand dollars for the hitches and toolbox for the new pickups.
And that will come out of that each.
Take it, come out of the cap.
Yep.
That's why we get this right. Any other questions to that request?
I have a question on that item. In the explanation area, item eighteen, it says that you have the, the request of five thousand and it's budgeted for thirty-eight five each. And twenty-three hundred and four dollars is still available. Is that twenty-four hundred dollars after the budgeted amount? Or is that before you buy these five thousand dollars?
Per truck. So that. The twenty-three.
Yeah, that's what is left over.
Yes, that is what is available currently and has been budgeted.
That's what's left over after.
So do you have to do a budget amendment to do this five thousand or?
No.
So after you spend all the money, you still have twenty-three hundred bucks left?
No, it's, right now they're showing twenty-three hundred without the five thousand.
So you'd have to do a budget amendment to buy this?
Have to come down for capital.
It's going to wiggle somewhere else.
That's what I wonder if they can wiggle it somewhere else for a little bit. If it's not worth a budget amendment.
No, I know. I just wasn't sure what that meant.
That's what I'd say too, yes. Just like that's what's left.
Yes. The current amount is, allows that shows us twenty-three hundred and four dollars is still available for each vehicle. So then double that. So issue is slightly under, depending on what he ends up getting as actual cost.
Cause he's still with the seat covers and whatnot. I'm assuming on that budget.
That's sort of a preparation that's there, so that's not a primary capital expense.
Budget for the ones.
It did not. Just because that is equipment essential to the capital of the utility or to the truck, not something like we took a month lapse or seat guards, things that are going to wear and be replaced do not have to be part of that original investment, but this was, what was budgeted from prior. I may deal with that. Okay, so we did have a motion by Lexi and a second by Carol to approve that purchase. Ready for calling through vote? Does it get, oh, so any questions? So all in favor of approving the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Kelly is back, he can get that handled. Okay, scheduled workshop four, to plan for city properties, including the available lots and the bank building. This is, I know, been on many of your minds. We've had discussions about it. We just, we can't really ever take action per se, we don't know what action to take. So we figured a good workshop, we saw how well that worked with Prandar to just bounce all ideas out and talk about it. We will not be able to take action, but we will. Then we would, if we can do it before our next meeting, ideally, which I guess now we're having another meeting in there too. We could then end up with an action item for our twentieth, but. And so I was going to drop the idea of Wednesday, the fifteenth, at six thirty. Is there something across the way for five to six?
Wednesday will.
Wednesdays, no. No Wednesdays. Any other day that is out?
Wednesday's church night.
Any other dates that are totally out? Friday nights? Tuesday? We can communicate that offline. I just wanted to make sure we don't, everyone may be thinking about it.
What, is this time sensitive? I mean, what kind of priority is it? I know we've been talking about it for a long time. When we're talking about it in our meetings, I mean, we can have it in a regular agenda meeting. But it could consume a lot of our time in a regular agenda meeting. So I think the workshop's a good idea. Just wondering if it could be a month from now or.
Yes.
Or what kind of priority is it that?
I don't know. It's just a matter of now that people are starting to look at either buying lots or buildings or whatever, we'd like to make sure we have to sign one of them since someone stole the other one, but you know, taking action, promoting that or listing it or whatever we need to do to get the word out and make sure that's in what price you want it for, because that was already discussed previously, you know, when we had the offer. We just don't seem to have a real steady plan for that development. And so I think it'd be good to let us all talk it out, figure something out. But no, it doesn't really have a deadline, so it could go after that, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think we should have a workshop on that. Maybe, maybe we want to. You know, always better, the sooner, the better on anything that we discuss, but maybe we just want to go into April sometime on this.
See what's good for you. We've got another one coming up this coming week, whatever.
We have a, we have a meeting next week and then we'll have a meeting a week after that.
Yeah. Okay. So would you like to table it for an April meeting at this point?
See, let's see how, if you can find a date.
That looks good. Especially, especially.
I'll take, I'll table it for, um. How can I do that? I'll table it for a non-specimen time in April?
Yeah, an April meeting. For an April schedule, and then we can talk about it. And then I need a second.
I'll second.
And a second by Jean. Okay, that's stated we will table and scheduling a workshop session for the city properties until April. Do we have any other comments on that? All eyes for call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Workshop on the agenda, sort of, coming forward. Okay, setting the dates for the hazardous materials and spring cleanup, and Scott has those for you.
Yeah, for the hazardous waste materials, actually be held right out front here. They'll bring a truck in for that. That will be April first. From nine, from nine until eleven. You want to know?
April first or May first?
May first, I'm sorry. May first.
Hey, you're talking hazmat though, is that what you were saying?
Right, first one is hazmat.
Hazard, yeah, hazardous.
That's a truck on top of it.
Yeah, that's the May ten.
That's the bad reason.
May ten?
That's the May ten. Cleanup is May second, right?
No, cleanup is May ninth. The citywide cleanup will be May.
Well, on here, that's last year's dates, isn't that saying?
Oh, okay, last year's was, okay, we gotta read it all the way.
We didn't know the new ones.
So now, when is the cleanup then?
May ninth.
Okay.
So that gives us time to communicate on the end of this month and, and April to get it out.
Cleanup is May ninth and hazmat is the tenth?
No, the hazardous material is May first. May one.
So what, this is all, is all last year's?
Last year, yes. Last year's spring cleanup, May second, with virtual flags. So that we have an idea of timing when it happens.
Okay, okay.
Cleanup is May second.
So, no, that's last year.
Oh, last year.
Yeah, see, we're not reading good.
May ninth is cleanup. Moves first, let the hazard.
Thank you, she's got it.
May ninth.
May ninth is cleanup and May first.
He could not. He called, I don't think he could do them in that order, so he chose that first one.
I have a question. Are there charges for that now for shop flags, fifteen dollars? So now, what happens if the junk collectors come through and you guys don't pick it up? Cause it's already gone.
It's gone, it's gone. There's no, no.
So you can take your chances, but then you also could still get.
Well, we're still paying for it and you're still, it's still going away. It doesn't matter who gets it. It's still gone.
And other cities like this are going.
Your purpose is to have that item gone.
Okay. It is.
If you think it's a desirable item, you want to roll the dice and say, John, I don't even buy a flag.
I was just curious. The only thing is, you got to have your flag by Friday if you want to pick it up by Monday. And they're not open Saturday and Sunday, so you're kind of.
Okay, so we have those dates set. Do we have a motion and a second to approve those dates if we want to see? Okay, Lexi has made the motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Jean Gable seconded that. So we have set the twenty twenty-three dates for hazardous materials to be made first and spring cleanup to be made ninth. We have a motion from Lexi and a second by Jean. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of them setting those two dates, confirming those two dates, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Date's set, thank you. And item twenty-two, approve upgraded speed limits signed as for South Maple Street in response to the planned twenty twenty-three DOT detour route. And that is partly due to Glenn, as Glenn does comment, like I read your mind there, I guess we have that down. And that is partly due to Glenn, as Glenn does comment, like I read your line there. I guess we have that down. But we've talked to Kelly and he's not here, but we've been trying to get quotes on and some don't have any official quotes yet coming in.
Do you really think times are really gonna do anything? Because I really don't.
Are you not gonna slow down?
I mean, I slow down. But I, I don't, I just don't think times are really gonna do it.
This statistic...
One thing that these can do, well, if you get the option, is it'll record the dates and times of what speeds it's seeing, which would help us for when, you know, when we, if we're gonna spend time out there, it'd be nice to spend time when we think there's gonna actually be something versus random guess.
Two o'clock in the morning, good hour.
Only semis, pretty much, yeah. Exactly. It does, it has a cloud storage thing. So it will, you can pull the data and run these reports. And then, like he said, you can know that you have a consistent problem on Thursday at ATM or whatever it is. Then they can go and sit there and focus that. Because obviously we have limited resources in our department. It would help to communicate it to our people to do proper traffic speeding.
It is a detour regardless. I mean, that is probably a heavier traffic area than Highway fifty-nine. Because they know that when they come off from eighteen, they can, they got a straight shot down to Highway three, which takes those trucks forward to Storm Lake with the hogs and whatever they're called. And all the green trucks that are coming to get corn, taking corn to the ethanol plant, they take that street.
And I think that, and I get, I just think it's so hard for some people to come to twenty-five miles an hour. I, obviously we can't change it, but I, I admire for some, I don't think, can we?
I don't know. Can we change it?
On a, on a thirty-one freeway like that, I don't know.
I don't know. I thought you did. I mean, because like you come into Prongar...
And it's thirty-five right here.
County, but I'm plows it.
County.
But like you, like you said, you come straight, like just like Prongar and it's thirty-five.
Both sides.
Both sides.
So Prongar's twenty-five.
Uh-uh.
Thirty-five right at the Ellis Airport.
The highway's thirty-five, block top is twenty-five.
Right, but you have like, you have a, like you don't go straight to twenty-five. You have like, you know...
That's a little space.
Yeah, that's the county that can put us more signs up coming in. If that's part of the problem. Except that we could have them do, I would assume that's something that's, I don't know.
The current speed limit set by the zone, like it's...
There, there's a default set by the state saying, you know, residential's are a default twenty-five. But like, for the streets under the city's jurisdiction, if they felt there's a need, they could do a speed study or whatever and set it to something else.
But is the county outside of the city limits obliged to be at, all the way at fifty-five? Or can we, could you guys ask them?
You could ask, I'm sure. I, to what extent, there's any obligation, I have no idea.
So when you, when the speed limit sign thing was up on the cities, and you said your speed was, whatever, that sign, that digital thing that Prongar let us use?
That camera, yeah.
Yeah, how effective was that?
You would need, you would need some kind of data gathering machine to be able to tell you.
Nope, I have an idea about the sheriff's office, very likely.
And, and, I mean, you say how effective was it? Well, you could see, even if they have data collection on that, you'll see what the data is while it's there, but you don't know what the data was when it wasn't there.
So anyway, I just think it's...
So you think that they should increase the speed on it?
No.
No, decrease, decrease the speed further out.
I think that you, how, so how, when you come off of high, um, coming into Maple Street, there's no sign until you get to hurt a both housing. It is twenty-five. It is hard to come to...
But there is a reduced speed sign out there.
Right, so people do, but it's so hard to come to a straight stop or a straight twenty-five. So I would say you, we need something to start further.
We can't go. The only reason it's hard to do that is bad house.
Why?
Why would you do that? Like, could you light up the gas and you touch your brake and you don't... So you don't down your speed.
I'm just saying, is, like, no. But I'm just saying, it's hard to, other people, other people, just like I made a good point when it comes to... When you, when you came, when you said two miles, it was hard for you to...
That's exactly right. Two miles and I can only get down to thirty-five.
I drive a fifty-three foot grain tray truck flagging in this town and I get down to twenty-five in time. Because I, because I know it's twenty-five and there's a sign out there that says reduce speed, zone ahead.
I know that sign's there. And I know...
There's no obligation to not use your brakes to get down to that speed limit.
Well, I do use my brake to get down, but the trucks don't. And then they hit their J brakes when they're about two blocks from that stop sign.
They do it out here too.
I know. You have a J brake ordinance. They're not supposed to hit them.
No, but they don't care.
And that's the problem. People, they just flat out, the truckers don't care. They really don't. And I, my driveway sits just below that little bitty hill. I can see a truck coming, but I cannot see a car coming from the south. So when I have, like I told you, when I have company at my house, I stand on my deck and look to the south and also to the north and let them know when they can back out of my driveway. Because they can't see it either.
They took that hill out.
No, they did not.
You look, you go up and stand on the intersection.
Hey, I live there, Jay. I know what that hill is. No, you don't know.
Yes, I do.
No.
Because I watched them take it out because I...
I don't care. I live there.
Because that trash can used to sit this high block off the ground. And now, where did you put your trash can? It was clear down low down.
I have a, I have a sidewalk. Mine, but mine is still, it's still there, still of a hill.
But, but see, the problem is, is that intersection sits a lot. It isn't, it isn't a bump there. They took that. It's a bump.
I don't care what it is. You cannot see a car coming from the south.
It's a little blind.
But you can see a truck.
You've got those everywhere.
Well, not on that main highway of Maple Street.
Okay, so clearly it's, it's a concern for all residents on there and the kids who cross it, who have to cross it to go to school. And we have, we'll let wait, Nate weigh in as well and work with and try to get some quotes on.
It's not, it's not like, it's not like we want this to go through. You know, the DOT came to us and says, we have to do it.
Is it fifty-nine that's gonna be detoured?
No.
No.
So they came, they came and told us that we need to, that DOT came and said that we need to update our time?
No, I love the DOT or detour. Have they already approved that?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we're just saying that it's already been a problem, as she's pointed out and many have announced. It's supposed to be in March, but they haven't. So any time now.
It's twelve months out of the year, twenty-four hours a day. No, it doesn't matter if it's a detour or what it is. That street has, I mean, you can sit there and count trucks and cars all day long. And whether or not they're going to speed limit, which if they're coming from the north, yes. If they're coming from the south, no. But like he said, yeah, you can hit your brake and slow it down, but who does it?
It's the, it's the only road that goes south out of town.
That's exactly right. And we tried to get the county to pay for it, but they didn't. We paid for it.
I think it would be...
DOT paying for half of it.
No, they did not.
Yes, they did. The DOT paid for half that road over there, Maple Street.
Yeah, I live on that street.
Yes, they paid for half the...
If they had not paid for half, you would be, you would be obligated for twice what you were.
Twice what you paid. I'll bet you a thousand dollars that the DOT paid for half of it.
So at one point, I recall...
Well, we're not gonna, you're not gonna accomplish anything other than the fact it's clear the speed. And it's a problem.
It's been a problem for a long time. And we've done everything. We put up signs, we put up blinking signs, everything. What else are we supposed to do?
I think the county needs to lower this, that, further south.
Or if you're Susidie or when you're going on...
In fact, you don't have any extra rules yet, but this current, the latest state contract I could pull from the ones that had speed signs, you, for, there's, they have twelve or eighteen inches. The twelve inch solar, they're listing at forty-one nineteen. Eighteen inch is sixty-three fifty-five. And then if we did get a data collection unit, that's an option. I don't, they don't list what that option amount is.
Well, we got one right on the edge of town that's already blinking.
Blinking out.
Yeah, because that one used to be out further and they moved it closer to the town. One, there's one, there's one by the FCS building, there's one for that. There's actually two of them. Yeah, because there used to be one out further and then we brought it down. I think it's...
Yes, it's approximately, probably a lowest, smallest sign would be like a three thousand, that's like thirty-five hundred and up to five thousand per sign.
Is it, is this a blinking sign?
Yes.
Wow, it's one that lists, what's the radar?
Oh, okay.
Steve has a copy of the one that we're in the printout.
It shows up. No, but it shows what it looks like.
So it's gonna be, it'll read their speed in flash and then you can put in the alternate gestures sometimes and say shut down or cop ahead or whatever. And then that's what can record that data so that you can track it.
Well, it's gonna be Jimmy Buffett's.
Uh, this guy said, when I just got the quote from today, he said they have one in Emmitsburg currently and in Lester. So we can look into getting additional quotes since those were not able to be presented for tonight. But we can, just to, I guess the general consensus is that we should take action or it's not a problem.
We need to take action.
Yeah, I think so too.
You gotta realize, there is a school on that street, that daycare. Those kids cross that street because they go to the library and they go to the playground and do different things. And I don't know how long that detour is gonna be if they take, yeah. And chances are it might be longer than that, depending on weather. But it just, it's just really irritating to think that there isn't something that the county can do to start further out with a speed limit there and then come into Palina at the twenty-five. So I don't know. The county engineer is the person to go talk to about this?
I would say the county engineer and then probably the supervisors, that they would have to make that decision.
Right.
And there's also school buses that stop on that street because they're now picking the kids up on that street.
Yep. If they're stopping to pick up kids, they set the lights up.
Yes, they do.
But it doesn't, if they're coming from the south, Jay, and those trucks are really coming, they, they're not gonna get, that school bus is in danger.
I've never really seen anybody drive that fast on that.
Sit out there. Just sit out there.
They live along.
I give it, I give it.
Lexi lives on that street. Brendan lives on that street. I live on that street.
I've been watching, watching him sing. No, my mother-in-law lived on that street. I do sell reports and they drove by asking, not down.
So maybe you can answer this question for me. Is there, I don't remember recalling seeing a speed limit sign on, on the county roads other than coming into town and, for example, coming into Prongar, right? I don't recall seeing a fifty-five. You mean just out in general in the county? That's because statewide it's an automatic fifty-five unless it's supposed to otherwise. Okay. So that would, so if they want, if there were reduced speed limit signs in Sacramento, the, the county would, that would be their responsibility to put some in both directions. I think so, yeah. Yes.
We can reach out to them and see what they can do outside the city limits, but inside between arms, two lines, signs, we should do something. But yes, this, I don't know if you guys saw this, but you can see the difference. If you're gonna get hit, a pedestrian gets hit by a vehicle traveling at twenty miles per hour, nine out of ten survive. If that speed doubles, only one survives. And I think you would say a lot of the traffic is going forty miles an hour through there. Especially a semi maybe in there. They can't stop this fast, but...
If there's, if there's a problem with the kids crossing, what do we ever do with that? That flashy thing that's up on the highway?
It's still there.
Was it, they put it back up?
They did.
The only thing is, the signs are high-priced.
And they only work for the first couple of times.
I was gonna say, it's not, it's fine, you know.
That does show, they do have stats on that too, because they think it does work. But it still will, apparently, two years later, it reduces the speed by three and a half miles.
Okay, how, how many, how many years have we had those signs flashing and obviously it's not working?
My kids, the ones that come through town that don't...
If anything, that's gonna give somebody a seizure when you see them in the middle of the night.
They man blinker.
Fake cop car, things out there. They have to do a cop car. They have to do a cop car out there. They also work at one.
Lexi and I have sent my lawn with a little dryer, a ten radar gun.
We make wood sillies or that's whatever.
I wonder maybe we should talk to the county and see once and make it do something or what their thoughts are on it to help us out first. Before we order signs or do anything.
Well, I would have radar signs.
Well, that's what I don't feel it's working.
The time, the time, they're gonna work.
I don't think they are either, but I think, let's see if we can get some help from them. They just give them some patrol once in a while to help. I mean, needs a lot.
Think Susidie will rent us one of their portable cameras?
Well, they take all the ones where they can give you the tip and send you the tip. Those are not cheap either.
No. No, I think you'd be talking an order of magnitude over these.
Yeah.
For price.
Right, I'm sure. So I don't know. I think we should talk there first.
Yeah. And do you think the Cal Street crossing, your speed crossing signs, you board the crosswalks, I mean, so this might help? I think we talked about putting something like that up.
Well, we did the lines and stuff. That is gonna help some. I don't know that it did. But you can't see those until you're almost on top. Well, and now with winter, so I don't enter enough. But if you put the crossing signs, you know, pennants? Oh, okay. So that you're telling the drivers when they're coming in, hey, there's pedestrian or spoken crossings coming up? Maybe that would be a little something. But I think too, we need to find some, we need to get some ideas.
Right.
Before we start buying signs.
I wouldn't buy anything until you talk, especially the county, because I think as long as it's a bypass and the state is responsible for that too. And they need to take a look at that because bypass is block top, isn't it, the fat block top south of Palina? That goes across, I don't know, I can't remember the number of it, but they come across there and then they come in through that way.
I want to pre get help through the state too, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the other ones that are doing the bridge.
DOT grants would be.
Yeah. So I think that's where we gotta go first.
I'll check in and see if, uh, he doesn't retire until July.
Like third or fifth or something down there.
Who's that?
So we're there.
Supervisor, or the engineer.
He's retired.
He's retiring, second time.
So do we have, does Scott do some research on that or Kelly or?
Nate, Nate, he gets up there.
Red and Ashack.
The issue at least. Yeah, let's go there first.
Okay, any other things? I don't really have a lot to say right now for that. It's gonna start meeting soon, long enough. And we have, budgets are in works and being fleshed out. We have Lori's updated one, she provided me there, which I'll let her talk to you about here in a minute. And, um, what else am I gonna say? We're getting any cobbles gotten, all the excitement. We got a new postage maker. Look at that bright shiny white thing there.
It actually said, what, cheaper running than the old one?
Yep, it's actually leases cheaper than what the other one did. This one, we can do actually packages, print package labels instead of taking those to the post office. So that was a savings there also.
Cool.
That looks nice and neat.
Then the printer, new, or I should say new copy machines scheduled to be delivered on Wednesdays. So let's slowly move ahead. And then also, we did reach out to Iowa League of Cities and ask them if they had anybody that could come and help in the office with some of this stuff. Gave us a couple of names, spoke with a city clerk from Rolf. And originally we had her scheduled to come in Wednesday of this week, but with the weather, with snow again for, what, Wednesday, Thursday? We kind of put up, called and kind of put a stop to that for this week. And she has counsel on Monday of next week. So she said she's gonna be busy Monday, Tuesday. So hopefully next Wednesday, we can get her in here, so.
And where is she from, Rolf?
Rolf. Yeah, she said she lives in West Bend, but she works in Rolf's.
He just has mentor.
Yeah.
She's just coming for one day or coming for the week?
No, it won't be for the weekend. Right now it's for one day and we'll just have to see. And then at Rolf, they actually use the same software we do for utilities. So we should, I mean, she understands that. And she said she's been in this position for like fifteen years, so, and she's got a good understanding of everything, so.
And while she's talking to Simple City too, but you don't hope that's not even necessary.
Yeah, yeah, we spoke with Simple City and we have some online stuff on both Michelle and I to go through. And then that's our accounting software, like for the utilities. Yeah, yeah. We've got some things to go through on that. And then, and then hopefully they'll actually send somebody out that'll sit with us a day or two and just kind of go through some of this stuff to, to help through.
See, I think.
Thanks Glenda. Nothing's gonna get changed with that, but you need to be aware of it. You really do.
Thank you for your insight. Are you giving anything to report for the county?
What does work with? Uh, we dug a couple graves, trimmed trees on power lines on buildings and north and south roads off of them, 210. Took the power line down on the west end of Logan that will not go back up so they can move trees on that home property. Had a DGR meeting on water treatment in Will's last Monday. Used to have, stirrings were installed on the pickups, sanded roads from the last snowfall, scraped alleys, scraped viewing roads, pushed tree by a lot. We had a few leaks on the skid loader that were repaired, replaced battery in the mud bag, we had some sewer lines up town. Changed out some water meters, checked the flow at the car wash. Whoever they sent in there, it looked like their issue was something going on inside there. Changed oil on Equinox, uh, water paperwork and tests. Light bulbs changed at the light plant, line inspections for 2023, meter read in, read outs, water, some water services turned back on. Went to the paint sprayer, elaborating for traffic paint. Worked on the, cut the mirrors and started closing on Main Street to the start of the main plant.
Are you guys gonna have to make a big list of who all fixes our streets or are you able to do some of it, guys? Or like, cause I was getting to deal much.
There's intersections right down here on both sides that we're gonna have to, well, thank you. We patched them last October. And they were gone by, well, progressively got worse, but I think they popped off by Christmas.
I think we need to, I don't, we don't have to discuss now. It's just that, that we need to put it on the agenda. It's maybe talk about in the next three, four, five years when we need to redo Main Street, just Street all.
These, these intersections aren't gonna last too long.
With concrete and not just.
I think that's something, we can do some of these, like this intersection down here, right across the street, both sides, we can do some of like 20 feet back, replace both sides, but at least get rid of, right now I can't drive a motorcycle on that. With a gallon. And there's quite a few, I mean, you drive around. We can throw the path that, or next in, but that's our last. I'll put it over there.
A better deal, we have less.
So we'll patch big concrete holes or just have somebody come in and look at it and I don't know what we ever wanna do, but it's definitely gonna be.
I think before the holes were rounded down so we can, yeah, that's a lot of damage. Cause that, right there, by 18.
And was, and was, uh, Parker though. That's not done at one of those, but Shuts it hasn't.
No, that was, that was sealed code, uh, two years ago.
If you drive down that avenue, you see tracks that are dusted up and bad. And that's two years. I mean, how even sealed code, we didn't picture anymore.
But you gotta remember, some of those seal coats, some of the seal coat streets in town are just seal coat streets with dirt underneath. They've never been paved.
Oh, I hope, cause we replaced them with coppers.
That's what I'm saying, like in so many, like, and then, you know, that's why I'm saying, that's at a workshop that we can discuss that. Obviously we've been here long enough. I'm just thinking the next.
Well, we don't need to.
We need a plan for, and then for the next three, five years, which is, it's something that, that's all.
Well, last year we didn't get a seal code on that.
I thought we did.
No, I don't think we did.
Well, there you go, but he didn't.
He didn't come.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought you did.
Main was supposed to be done in, uh, May or May.
Maybe.
May or, yeah. I thought it was May. Yeah, there was a couple other intersections that we were gonna do, but they didn't get to last year. So I guess we're gonna have to do a, Doc, Kelly, I'm up with the plan.
Cause I just hate to see you wasting our time. We've got plenty of blood trappers and ourselves, like we got building out trees and painting lines and super streets. There's a lot to get done.
Only thing is labor is getting higher priced.
Which are the cheaper cars.
Materials getting higher priced.
And everybody knows they can charge a higher fee too. Oh, did they ever find out? Did he find out anything about that guy when we redid that? He put out the business?
Put it here.
Cause we can throw that in on that electric thing as long as, you know, what we need to crank up for.
Really, all areas in that world, because my dear Charles, they, and it was wet, that, from that transfer, next to board, you could wash the ground. Bubble, it's, it looks like water was coming up first.
Oh, it's a lagoon.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely for something.
Probably about two, three years ago, they redid that one all the way and it's, uh, not pretty good, but it was on a two dollar.
The last one doesn't, the second one has three, not one two.
I'm surprised the DNR doesn't get out on us.
Those are discharge, you know, the good ones. I mean, what's, the problem with the thought for discharge, it's the matter of seven that's belly up and so one and two. That is going to need to dredge off instead of, or some discharge.
About what, about five years ago, they put a hole up, some bio.
We do that every year.
They were gonna dig, they were gonna dig it out. They were gonna back that one out. Cause it wasn't breaking down and so, but if we can get enough air in there, we should be alright.
You just gotta get air in.
You gotta get air in. Hopefully you guys are really good this time.
Uh, yes. It is probably an old, this is like a new, uh, connection. Uh, don't have a whole lot to report. April 1st and 2nd, I will be attending Iowa State Fire School down in Altona. I'll be down there. State Fire School.
Probably with my spudger and it's, that really put a, that snow and the impact. I realized that Jared's have just raised the top line, the salary rate's like 1500. Or 50,000, yeah, even. So 14, 580 is what it would be for $50 an hour per person on call for, call a, averaging three hours per call. So I think we have to add in there. Um, if we are busier than we are planning, sorry. That is the change I made from the last time you saw us.
Okay, so this is the first time I've seen this, obviously I was not here at the last meeting, but does $20,000 to my county and $20,000 to Sioux City match that?
There, the county would like that matched. You don't have to. This 20,000 would be this 15, up from the 15,000 of this current budget year. We're actually, we, we did the 14 last year, right? None of it was 14, just listed 15, 15 something, but yeah, um, and that's all we have. But the rest to me is included. I mean, we're paying for all the other stuff in there too. So I feel that's part of our 20. So I don't know who. So I had that in. So the 14, 580, that is just what we get paid when we are on a call. So I have all broken down. Um, the two 20,000 spots are the pay to be on call, to be ready to go anytime, to give up leaving town and so on and so.
Oh, so last year that, so 20,000, I figured it was 15,000.
Actually, everything was into that 19,232. There's one one.
Yep.
Oh.
We don't have two. So we were underfunded.
You weren't doing daytime calls?
Well, no, we were. We've been doing daytime calls, um, since 2020. The on-call pay.
The on-call pay.
Yeah. But, so we've been under budget for our calls. Our regular paid salary has been under budget because I've never increased it until this year.
I didn't.
Um, I've never seen how much, you know, Sandy never shared with me our expenses or, or income. Cause if you look, and this was prior to the last meeting that I was at. What has been brought in by the ambulance and billing pretty much covers, almost covers our entire 2022 setup. Or, but. So. And last year we only paid for on the call for the weekends.
Yep.
We weren't gonna pay for the daytime and now they have. Well, we're using the county money for the daytime, yeah. And pay our officers because it's not, we're not the payment. And it's a lot of time. So especially if we're doing, calculating our own hours for payroll and so on and so. So. But, but yeah, so that's, that's our, those budgets. Question, um, director or after, very, you know, then again, with the clearance. I know the library has a board meeting coming up, so said he would like to come to the second meeting of the month to get reports, cause that woman and the actor is working, so we can go with this every time. So that, and there's maybe, alright, anybody else have anything that, that's about this?
I'm making a motion to a juror.
No, you can't do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm mine.
I talked with KT about doing flowers, like the corners out here, is that working? I decided. She wants to know how big a pots we want. We don't have any pots.
We always go through Blooming House and charity.
I know, we don't.
We have the pots, they have the pots.
But they're not ours, right?
Well, really one turkey.
That's what I thought.
Oh, they're hungry.
In fact, they want.
So we, you know how.
You guys took them back for a year, didn't you?
I'm not sure. Victor's still there.
They were supposed to have taken them back about two months ago.
Yeah, they're back.
Do you know how big you want them? Yeah, well, evidently have to get some from KT or.
But see what they've been doing in the past is they, so they, we let them know that we want to do those plants and then they pre-planned and drove the greenhouse. So when, so does she have a place to?
She could. She told me she could get them from another reliable place. She doesn't actually grow them, whereas Blooming House does. So are we still going to go with her or are we gonna go like the Blooming House?
How about we get quotes? That's not a bad idea. Get quotes. That's what I also suggested last year and that's all we're doing. And I'm gonna, people are gonna raise butt about it, but they can come to me for it. Because, no, the, only the four corners need the flowers because we gotta redo the library and those trees and some of the trees, like of the ruins, like we, when we redo Main Street, then we can add more flowers.
Well, are you still gonna have the pots by the, by the different?
Yes, but not, we're not gonna have hanging on or that.
No, 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 okay, just the four corners.
Just four corners.
Okay, but you still have pots around. Right.
Decided to, why it doesn't take our full time.
No.
No, the city still does those.
The city still does those.
Yeah, cause those are the cities. So do you, we don't have to put as many out, but.
And if the businesses want them, they put them out themselves and they put the flowers in.
We own those containers.
Yes.
The city owns a container.
All the big ones that are down there by ships.
And the businesses don't water it, easy on the water. Cause they already called them and they said, we got it.
But don't go up there and put any water. Not you, I mean that one.
We'll put that on the next agenda. How about we get quotes though? Get quotes, yeah.
Well, I already told them Cherokee weren't. Then they moved on, they moved on to another customer, cause they were holding off on the other one until they heard from us for sure.
Okay, we'll come back on.
Yep, and the other option, um, we're gonna think about two, there's Taro across the way. See a missing amount of traffic here. And we will be getting a title to each meeting, figure out a date for our meeting, the special meeting for the insurance meeting. And then, yes, it will be for the 20th.
Next Monday or?
Monday or Tuesday.
How about we do Tuesday? Taylor has a fire meeting Mondays, which is hard.
What is it, sorry? What time? Tuesday, uh, 14.
I'll come in first. Do you wanna sit right now?
Yep.
Okay, Tuesday the 14th.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30?
6:30.
I'll make a motion to that effect, make it official. Usually in 14.
14.
You've made the motion.
I'll second.
At 6:30?
Yep.
Special meeting? Special meeting. Set the agenda accordingly. Alright, it's very sorry, I have a motion second. Do I have any further questions? So I was supposed to look, oh, they were saying the special meeting for Tuesday the 14th at 6:30 PM. Say aye.
Aye.
And both say nay. Eyes, motion carries, set. I'll make a.
So good.
Lexi, Lexi and Steve, made motion to a juror, anyone else? Does this say anything to you, Sam? I know they're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
I wanna thank Brenda though for doing the supporting agenda.